This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming to our final town hall meeting before all the snowbirds leave. At this time, I'm just going to do a couple of introductions and let some of our staff talk about what they've got going on. First of all, we have lost one of our employees, Amy Maxfield. Sorry. She hasn't been gone that long. She decided to go on to another career path. So in place of Amy, we have hired Sharon Medina. You all may, can you stand up, please? You all may recognize Sharon. Sharon used to be in patrol. We've now brought her over into the office. So I'm going to let Sharon say a couple of things, and then we'll go from there.
Hi, guys. Thanks for the welcoming. And I know she's not going to give me this mic too long, you know? So I'll just say thank you, and I'll look forward to meeting each and every one of you, probably sooner rather than later. But anyways, if I can do anything for you, you know where my office is. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up our wonderful receptionist Stephanie, and she wants to talk about it.
Good morning, everyone. So as the season is coming to a close, I just wanted to remind everyone that to fill out your departure form, once you receive it, you will notice it is a little bit different, more easier to understand and go through and read and fill out. So if you have any questions or need some, they will be up here instead of having to come to the office, or they're in the mail center. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next, I'd like to try, call up Brad, see if he has anything he'd like to talk about.
Try out Brad a little bit. Hello, everybody. Brad over in the DRC office. I just wanted to give a quick reminder that as folks are leaving for the summer, that we do recommend you pick up a caretaker to watch over your lot while you're gone, take care of the weeds, you know, whatever needs you desire while they're gone. I have a new updated list in Neighbor Network and in my office, so please stop by, and I'll help you out. Thank you.
So Brad, can they have work done at their unit while they're gone?
Yes, you very much can have work while you're gone, although it is the owner's responsibility to make sure to reach out to me, and we notate it with the permit, and we know who's going to be doing work on your lot, so.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'd like to call up our activities director Thelma.
Hi, everyone. I'm Thelma Blue, and I just have a couple of things here. Desert rats, we're going to start with the desert rats. And we've got a planning committee scheduled for April the 9th at 9:30 a.m. here in the PAC. So this is just if you want to, if you want to be a volunteer with the desert rats this summer and help us schedule our programming and everything, we would love for you to attend. And the other thing is, our office is open. We still are running full staff in there, so come see us. Thank you.
Thelma, while you're opening for the summer, you'll have regular hours, or we'll talk about that. We may adjust that later.
Yes, the summer hours, they'll be coming out later, depending on who we have as volunteers and things like that, okay?
And then desert rats, how many people do usually get involved in desert rats for the summer? Do you have an idea? Brad?
I don't have an idea, so.
All right. Thank you.
It does take a lot of volunteers to pull off our summer program.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to hand the mic over to Mike, and he'll give us an update on some of our summer projects that we have scheduled. We are going to have a very busy summer this year with projects going on, so as you see projects in the works, please just bear with us as we get through them this summer.
Hello, for everyone that hasn't met me already, my name is Mike Nice. I'm our operations manager. I think I know the majority of the faces in the room here, but we just want to kind of talk a little bit about our summer projects, just to give you guys, we're referring to in the loop, to stay in the loop. We want you guys to know what's going on, what our plans are, and how busy we intend to be here in the resort over the summer months. For those of you that are staying, we hope that you enjoy what we bring to the resort. And for you that are exiting the resort, we really enjoy that, you know, we hope that you come back and notice all the beautiful things that we intend to do over the summer months. You know, it can be a little challenging between summer and season in regards to projects and accessibility and making sure that everything flows in that right direction. So we know within the next 30 days or so that weather's going to get a little bit warmer, and we're going to get to work. So I've got a quick little synopsis of some real high-end important things that we're going to be working on this summer. One of those being, of course, the asphalt project. Asphalt project is going to be reconstruction of Package 4. A lot of those areas, I know a lot of those residents in that location are really excited about that improvement because that road is deteriorating quite a bit. That will include a valley gutter, so that valley gutter will run all of that water out to the designated locations, culvert areas, to the golf course. Should really improve the lifespan of that asphalt. So we're really excited to proceed through that. The most exciting news is that it's the last reconstruction area, and then we're down to a maintenance program. So we will be doing the reconstruction of Package 4, also be seal coating Package 9, which was the improvement that was done in 2023. So that will get sealed, and then we will also be doing some repairs to trigger. We have some drainage repairs that need to be addressed. We have drainage repairs in the corner of Wrangler and Roy Rogers. There's a pool in that corner that also is going to be addressed with a valley gutter. And we're also going to be paving the entrance to the south storage, as well as reconstructing the asphalt to the ranch, the ranch entrance there. That entrance, there's quite a few potholes that are leading in there, and of course, the existing drive to the south storage is currently gravel. So it's going to be a really nice improvement for that location, and we look forward to having that begin soon. We're going to be looking about April 30th, May 1st to start that work. We will begin in Package 4, and they will mill out where the valley gutter will be first. We will create constant flow of traffic in those areas, so there's not going to be any restrictions. As soon as we have maps, plans, they will all go out to the community so you folks are aware. We'll get A-frame boards out like we've done in prior years that show which areas are going to be closed for what particular days. We've got it down to a pretty good science, and you guys, you guys are fantastic about working with us, so thank you. I look forward to that improvement. We'll continue our roofing here in Town Center, also including the NC-1 building. That will be done before summer, but we also have to be improving the, finishing up the improvement of the chuck wagon roof that was backdated from 2021. So that's also on our agenda. We intend to include some landscaping improvements down the boulevard from the entrance to Happy Trails Town Center parking lot, which will include some red gravel to match what we have in the Town Center and improve what we have all the way down the boulevard in conjunction with what we've done at the entrance levels to the villas. So that's exciting. We look forward to that. I think it's really going to bring some life and really good color into the resort and the entrance there. We also look to do some lighting improvements in those locations to beautify those areas in conjunction with some improved lighting. We did some improvements, installed some solar lighting along the intersections of Happy Trails Boulevard, and we've got some really, really positive results from those really minimal solar lightings. So we're going to improve that and continue to put some of those solar-powered motion lights, so they don't stay on, they're not a nuisance to any neighboring properties if they're nearby. It's only if someone's walking past them. So that's really cool, little things that go a long way. We have the monument improvement that will be taking place. We've got all of our estimates situated for that. Right now, we're just waiting on confirmation from Great Eagle to improve the portion that is on their side and the responsibility for payment of that. So we intend to have that moving forward here very shortly. So if you're here through the summer, you'll see that improvement happening. We intend, you, some may have saw a blast that went out recently in regards to the improvements into the showers at Town Center Pool, so we intend to replace all of the showerheads and mixers throughout those facilities to better accommodate our residents with handheld showerheads that are reachable. I know we've had some complaints that some of our showerheads are, you might have a detachable one there, but you can't get to it, which I completely understand, I'm only 5'5". So we got some improvements to the villa corners, the sidewalks throughout. The BGM committee worked really hard on trying to establish some improvements to the villas. I'm sure that some folks have been through that area if you don't live there. Those sidewalks are all at 90-degree angles, and they've, they've really been used for more golf cart access, and they have been pedestrian access over the years, caused some issues in, you know, landscaping, grading, things like that. So we're going to be improving some of that. We intend to do a plethora of striping throughout the resort this summer, which will include our stop lines, you know, paths along the boulevard. We intend to do some pedestrian crosswalks, things like that, that are going to be improved through. We're also going to be painting street limit signs on the actual asphalt as you enter in some key locations in regards to the safety committee. So that's going to be some really nice improvements for this upcoming season, hopefully to try to get some efforts to slow everybody down, get some improved traffic control within the resort. We're looking at replacing our street signs, of course, that's going to be a big one. Like I said, little things go a long way. We've got a lot of folks that notice these little, little particular things throughout the resort that have been neglected, so we're going to be doing that in conjunction with actually looking at the proper spelling. We found that a lot of our street signs aren't even spelled properly, so we'll be taking care of that this summer. Of course, the BGM committee and our board of directors have approved the resurfacing of Town Center pickleball courts and Town Center tennis courts, so that'll be taking place in May, which will be really neat for the improvement of the resort. The Town Center pickleball courts will match the improvements to the Cascades Courts, so they will be the same color, and the existing colors on to the tennis courts will maintain. We're looking at improving, there was also a motion to approve a solid wall behind the Performing Arts Center. It's directly behind us here. This little gap that we have open, a lot of times you'll see items that are stored in that location. There's risers back in that location that the fellowship uses. We have our scissor lift in that area a lot of the times because we're improving the lightings frequently here in the pack, so we're going to be enclosing that with a roll-up door. Really should beautify the back of that building, so when folks are utilizing the dog park, you know, you don't see all of those items in there, as well as kind of maintaining the life of all of the items that were storing in that area and getting them out of the weather. So excited about that. And I think that that's the gist of, I think we're going to be pretty busy. I think that that's going to take us a few months. So I'm sure there's a couple other things that we've missed, some little interior improvements we intend to do throughout. You know, we noticed things when we go around talking with some folks in the chaperone room. We found that there's a chandelier in there that's from, I'm pretty sure, 1980. But we're going to go ahead and make those small adjustments as needed when we're finding some of these smaller items that need to be addressed. So with that being said, I have one more thing that we wanted to bring up, and it's a little contentious, but we're going to bring it up anyway, is our collection facility, a trash facility. We are going to be adjusting towards the summer hours. Summer hours, we're looking at accommodating a two-day-per-week service and moving it into the morning, of course, so that folks aren't baking out there in the sun. We're thinking preliminary rate this time to do a 7 to 11, so that folks can get out and about, be able to utilize their trash services. And right now, currently, we're thinking a Tuesday and Thursday. And the reason being is our in-ground trash is picked up on a Tuesday and Friday. Now, we understand that Saturday is still that kind of the question right at the moment, and our fear is that we may not have enough population at that point in time to justify the additional Saturday. What I can say is that as we, as we proceed closer to this, you know, May 1st, 100-degree weather, we're going to gauge that, and we're going to make the adjustments as needed. We want to accommodate our residents, but we also want to be reasonable when, in regards to keeping a facility open that may or may not have that need at that particular time or as much need at that particular time. So it will be maintained as long as, you know, we proceed through this trial and everything proceeds further with the board. I would imagine, I'm not speaking for the board, but I would imagine that this service will continue. I mean, it's been successful. Bringing that facility down to that location has been a tremendous success. I know it's been an adjustment for all of us, but ultimately, it has, it's performed and done everything that we anticipated it would do. So I'm really proud of that location. I'm glad that we've got it under control, and I'm glad that it's still working for this community because we don't want to lose that service that we have. So that's something to come, you'll see forward in the blast, that we're going to start educating folks sooner than later in regards to the changes that may be coming, so that everyone has an expectation of what it could be. One other thing that I have in regards to that is, there was a discussion recently, and we had a lot of talk about recycling, and I'm not going to go into this in detail because we've had this conversation until we're blue in the face, but I did want to just kind of give some input in regards to recycling. We made contact with a vendor that does recycling services out of Phoenix. They specialize in recycling. And unfortunately, after some conversations of pricing and what's, what availability we may have, due to the sheer distance we are from that facility in downtown Phoenix, it's not going to be, it's not looking like it's going to be more affordable than what we were currently paying. However, what I will tell you is we will continue to keep our ears and eyes open for any opportunities we may have for recycling services. I think that if it were, you know, equitable for the community, I think we would all agree that recycling would be fabulous, at the very least cardboard. You know, we have a lot of Amazon packages, and we know that that's a big calling here within the resort. So keep your ears open as well. If you guys hear things and hear some changes, there's a lot of involvement going on with the cities and how they're recycling. So I'm sure it's a matter of time before something will rear its head and we'll figure something out, but as of this moment, I just wanted to give an update that we have not found any more affordable service for recycling. With that being said, I don't have a whole lot more to say in regards to what we've got going on, and I will pass it back to Darlene.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, we're going to have some fun. We're going to have a contest going on for the community. So right now, I'm going to call up your board vice president, Roberta Ernest, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about that contest.
Good morning. Oh, come on, y'all can do better now. Start again. Good morning.
Good morning.
There we go. All right. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about background context, okay? Happy Trails is a wonderful resort. Would we not all agree? It's excellent. It has been here basically since 1985. It has a historic value, right? The history is foundationally based on Dale Evans and Roy Rogers, king of the Cowboys. We are all in this room very familiar with those two individuals. They have been with us as we've grown up. We've seen them on the silver screen, if not in our living rooms on TVs. And when we think of Roy and Dale, it brings us a smile, does it not? It brings us back to our childhood, and it makes us happy, and that's a good thing. I want you to remember something. Actually, I want you all to repeat this one thing for me. We will never forget our history. Everybody say that with me. We will never forget our history. And one more thing we're going to say is, we will always cherish our history. Say that with me. We will always cherish our history. It's important, and it's of value to us. Now I want you to breathe and think outside the box. We have, as an aging community, well, I'm not aging, all of you might be, but as an aging community, we have new owners that are coming into the resort, and we welcome them with our arms open. However, many of them, as we are finding, don't even know who Roy Rogers and Dale Evans are. And I'm surprised at that. They're only 10 years younger than I am, and they have no clue, none, not their fault. It's just that Roy and Dale weren't part of their upbringing and wasn't part of their history. They grew up with other things. But we will never forget our history. Now, let's fast forward into today. Nobody likes change, I get it, but it is something we have to do, not overnight, but we have to step into change, and we have to move with evolution and the change of the environment and the change of the community and the change of history, if you will. We have a chuck wagon here that is phenomenal, and it has been here since the dawn of time with us. And we all know that we want the chuck wagon to be successful. How many of you have not eaten at the chuck wagon since it's gone under contract with a restaurant company? Anybody? Okay, great, because what I was going to say is, if you support the chuck wagon, you're supporting our community. Now, we all know that the chuck wagon is a little outdated in design, and it's coming to the point where we're going to need to do some updating, okay? And we all know that. We've had a focus group with the chuck wagon, and they came up with fantastic ideas. They said, "Let's not get rid of the Western theme. We want to keep the Western theme, but let's update it." You know, things like the flooring. We know the flooring has to be replaced, it's old. Get the carpeting out. Let's put in maybe the wood planking, what do I call it? Not nautilus, it's laminate, thank you. You know, it's padded, it's soft, it looks like a wood flooring, it looks like a barn, it looks Western. It'll be great for a restaurant. Sounds like a great idea. Let's paint. Let's update the color scheme. The brass chandeliers are from the 80s, and that's back when the chuck wagon was what? Basically, a cafeteria. Let's update that lighting. Maybe some wagon wheels, things with sconces, with LED lighting, so we got more lighting, but looks more like an updated Western. I want to say something like Longhorns, you know, updated pictures of Western, not necessarily Dale Evans and Roy Rogers, because that pulls us back into the past. Let's move into the future and update the Western theme, okay? So you're with me so far? Not too bad. We're not going to lose our case, our trophy face that pays, trophy case that's back there with Roy and Dale. No, we're going to move that to a location where we can honor and respect it and look at it as our history because we will what? Never forget our history, and we will always cherish our history. Now, having said, talking about updating the chuck wagon, so it's a little bit more of a modern Western theme, it was brought to our attention by a couple of residents, and if we're going to do this, maybe this is the time to do a name change. Now, I know. Oh my God, I can see that everybody could just kind of freeze up. Okay, I want you to just breathe, just take a nice, slow breath. Let's open up our minds, and let's think about this for a minute, because I know, Maynard, if we, if we change the name, I know, sweetie, you're going to call it the chuck wagon forever. I got it. We all do that, right? We get, we get entrenched on a name because it's been that way for years. We're going to mistakenly or just inadvertently, it's always going to come out chuck wagon. I got that. There's nothing wrong with that. But as we move forward into the future, and if we update it, which we're going to update it, then a name change is not necessarily out of the plan, because what happens is, if we continually think about it as a chuck wagon, we constantly slide back into the past. So, there's nothing wrong with that. Remember, I said, "We'll never forget our history, and we will always cherish our history." But we don't want to be like the mobile home parks in Florida that were fabulous in the 80s died in 2000. They were fabulous in the 50s, but they died in the 80s because nobody took the step to kind of migrate a little bit at a time with the environment, evolution, and change. So if we change the name, what we thought would be a great idea, may not be, but we thought it was a great idea, board management, we're in a contest. We're going to send it out to the community and have you solicit a name that you think would represent our history, our chuck wagon, an updated Western theme, and send it to us. And we will collect that data, we will review it, we will probably skin it down, we're not sure yet, skinning it down to about six names, thoughtful ideas, and then we can send that out most likely to a vote, to the community, or the board of directors can make that choice. We hadn't gotten that far. This is just our first step. But either way, we want to send the idea out to you, and as the owners, send a suggested name into management, and we'll get you that contact. I'm sure it's going to be in a blast, so you will have that information. Think about it. Breathe, relax, and remember, we will never forget our history, and we will always cherish our history. Dale and Roy mean the world to all of us in this room, but we can't force that memory onto new people coming in. They have no clue, none. That doesn't mean we forget where we came from. We always remember it, but we have to look at where we're going. That's the thoughts. I realize many of you will come back with some ideas or questions or concerns. We're happy to entertain that. We'll give that all consideration, but just remember, Happy Trails, founded, foundationally based on Roy Rogers, Dale Evans. They're always in our hearts, and they're always with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Before I open it up to any questions or anything, I want to remind you all that tomorrow is our final vendor's day for the season, so if you can get out there tomorrow, it should, I think it's supposed to be a wonderful, beautiful day tomorrow, so.
It's cold.
Is it going to be cold? Oh, sorry.
It's a beautiful day.
Just wear a sweater, and if you can get out there and support our vendors, that would be great. So at this time, I'm going to open up to any questions or any concerns anyone may have for either Roberta or for any of us up here. Thank you.
There was one question in the chat in regards to, how does Chef Peters feel about this?
Okay, first, let me say one quick thing. I was just reminded, I forgot to say that there will be a prize for this contest. Whoever is selected or whatever name is selected, that couple will receive a dinner for two at the chuck wagon or whatever name, AKA, what is that, like Prince, Prince, it's out of, AKA formerly known as Prince. Chef Peters is all for it, but let me, let me just say this, it's our restaurant. We make that decision, but yes, we did ask him about it, and he thought it was a great idea. He's happy to accept whatever is chosen, and then he'll probably be invited to participate a little bit in ideas of remodeling or updating, but it's primarily, remember, we own it, it's ours. We make that final decision.
I'm in one addition, kind of a side note. Darlene had mentioned that the, where's my brain, the vendor's day tomorrow. There's my brain. And we're going to have Monster Tree on property as well, so if you have not signed up for your palm tree pruning, they are going to be available on property. You can come by and see them, or you can receive applications in the main office. There's a drop box in that location, so you can make payments to Monster Tree Service in that location. Of course, you don't not, you do not have to use Monster Tree Service for your palm tree pruning this summer, but of course, we all know that those palm trees have to be trimmed one way or another, so that will be happening this upcoming summer. We're looking probably towards the end of May, we'll start pruning common area trees, and then they'll take off with the private property trees, so that'll be exciting.
Hey, Jody, LL745. I just wanted to remind everybody about the recycling. Fun and Games will continue to recycle cans all summer long. So...
Thank you, Jody. Thank you so much for reminding us on that.
Aluminum cans. And they're up there by the car wash.
And just a reminder, Fun and Games does a lot with their money for this community. They don't just keep it to themselves, so...
Yes, good morning. Terry Walters, Lot 497. You're talking about doing new ground cover from the garden shack up here. That does not include getting rid of the olive trees?
No, not at this point in time. It does not include getting rid of the olive trees. We do have a master plan that was developed when, when we started doing this improvement into the town center and the villa corners. So we will be in future conjunction with that master plan. We want to start with the gravel, get the gravel situated in that area, and bring that beautification down. I know that the past, there's been a lot of conversations in regards to those olive trees. And I'm neutral. I'm very neutral there. But I know that there's, there's some that love them, and there's some that hate them. So, you know, we have that divide in regards to the olive trees throughout. What I can tell you is that we've recently started treating our olive trees so that they're not fruity. And we treated them for the first time, since I'm aware of, in March, to try to get some of that. They're just, they're dirty. I mean, that's just the reality. A lot of these, these trees, they end up dropping all of their, their olives on the ground, and folks step across them, and it stains the concrete, whatnot. So that has been an improvement that we've done to try to help manage those olive trees, but there has not been any, at this time, further discussion on removal of those trees.
But you're gonna put granite down the middle also?
Any other questions?
I have a question on, we're starting all these new deals on doing this and doing that. When are we gonna get some of this other stuff finished that we have already got in the works? And I'm talking about the radio tower, that fenced-in area is a mess. And also, I would like to see something done with the parking over here, when trailers come in here and they park anywhere they want to park. And then when there's a show or this, like tomorrow, you know, people have to park out on the road. So...
Yeah, absolutely. So we had talked about the parking situation. I think that's more policy side of things, and improvement to try to get control, better control of that location. Now, when it comes down to the cell phone tower, the, the tower is owned by the company that owns that cell phone tower. But are you referring to just the fence that's around it?
Right, the fence and the big pile of dirt that's in the middle.
Yeah, so they're, they're still continuing to do work on that cell phone tower. That's kind of the problem, is we don't own it. At that, that exact tower was sold, that location was sold to the provider many, many years ago. So we don't own that property, but you're right. We do need to get those, we need to get on them to get that stuff finished up, because they're taking their sweet time.
And I would also like to know that we had a big discussion at the last, was it the last board meeting about flags, what flags can be flown, and what flags cannot. Now, I was told that, well, that doesn't pertain to golf carts. And I think a flag is a flag, and they made it pretty clear, because we talked about the flags on golf carts, that you weren't supposed to fly certain flags.
You're referring to...
But now they're telling me, while the board hasn't made a discuss, they weren't clear.
So, so there was some, we've provided clarity. We've, we've asked the board to provide us some with clarity regarding the changes to the rules and regulations and flags. And, and you know, to give you a little bit of backstory, the issue was, is that our intent was to, to try to regulate the inappropriate and political items that were being flown in, in past election years. Now, we know that this could be an upcoming issue again, where we all are entitled to our opinions. I agree. I'm very opinionated as a person, but within a homeowner association community, to provide harmony to the community, we try to regulate that, and keep that as controlled as we possibly can. However, Maynard, there's, there's always that loophole, and something going on within that loophole. And the loophole here, and the, the part that was confusing was in regards to banners, flags, and, and non-political items. When it's, when we're referencing to a political flag, there's no question in mind. If it's not within the timeframe, and it cannot be flown on the flag pole per our regulations at any point in time. However, if it's within our election timeframe, that the statute allows you to have the flag up, say, on a wall as a sign, as long as it meets the criteria within our regulations, you can have that political item. However, we do have the right to enforce such political item if it's offensive, and/or if it's on our property, common area property. So the divide and the misunderstanding wasn't really the political side of the flag, the flags. It was more so the personal flags that was the, the confusion. And that has been cleared up. And the resolution there was, if a flag is designated on a flag pole, then it is determined as a flag. If a banner, or flag-type banner, is hanging off of a structure on a banner pole, then it is permitted as a banner within our regulations. So that's kind of the divide. And I know that can be challenging, but that's how we have to divide that. If you're, if you're flying a flag on a flag pole that is not within our regulation, then you're subject to a violation. If you're flying a flag on a flag pole that's, say, a 45 off of your structure, that's not an approved flag, it is still a flag pole, right? But if you install a banner, which would be at a 90-degree angle out from your structure, on, you know, a banner pole, we'll call it, and it is a Seahawks, for, I'm not a sports fan, I'm not saying I like Seahawks, I'm just saying, Seahawks would be a popular one within the resort, then technically speaking, it would be defined as a banner. So yes, the answer is, we've corrected it. They've, we've gotten clarification from the board. The political items are still under control, and we will continue to enforce them when needed. And we'll do enforcement action on all of the improper banners as necessary as well. Go ahead, Marilyn.
Marilyn Klein. He's referring to golf carts. They still have a flag pole on it, but they, those flags are almost weighing down it so that they are going uphill. They're so big. I don't mind the small ones, but these great big ones are ridiculous. Makes it look trashy.
I understand, and we really can't get into the control measure of, of how large the flag is on a vehicle. The vehicle is the challenging part. And we actually, we're in a seminar in the East Valley one day, and we were involved with a couple attorneys, association attorneys, and that was a question that came across the table. Because up until that first election year, the flags weren't really a popular thing. We hadn't seen this, you know, really, really blow up like it did, you know, political flags. And of course, that election year opened it up, and now you go to, I don't know if you've been to Lake Pleasant, but the corner of that, that lot there, Lake Pleasant Parkway, you can buy political flags galore, hundreds of them. You can get them anywhere now. So, you know, there's a lot more folks that are putting these things on their vehicles. So we asked them that question, what about a vehicle? And it's, and the answer unfortunately isn't as black and white, as black and white as you'd like it to be. But the vehicle, we have the right to enforce anything that's, that's offensive on our property. But if they're flying a, a flag, small or large, on their vehicle, or they have a bumper sticker on their vehicle, unfortunately, they're permitted to do so.
That wasn't what I was coming up here for, but I just thought that, that he specifically said golf carts. When we first put up the cell tower, it was a beautiful palm tree. Now it looks like a sick pineapple, or an acorn. And it is a eyesore. What happened to the nice, beautiful fronds?
Well, I think, if I recall correctly, if it was last summer, that they actually replaced the fronds on them.
Now, but they're sticking out.
And then that was a modification.
They're real short. They're not palm trees.
And I think that we stepped away from the control when we sold that to the cell tower.
Were they interfering with the communications that way? Why would they start it, have it available?
I don't, I don't know. I have no idea.
I just, I just think it looks awful.
Fair enough.
It's right in the middle of our parking lot.
Will McNamie, Lot 1674. Talk about opinionated. I think I'm one of the most opinionated here in this place. Two things I want to bring up, if I can remember them. One is, one is the fact that you're increasing signage, putting stop lines down, increasing speed limit signs, but you're doing nothing, absolutely nothing, to enforce those laws. What, if anything, is a plan in the future to enforce these laws?
That's, that's a continued question, Will, and I know that we feel, we've talked about this a lot personally, in regards to what we can do. And again, I'm still, we're still in a position where we need to figure out what is going to make the change here within this community. We kind of talked about this at one of our last meetings, is we're, we're subjected to private streets. And the subjection to our private streets means that we don't have outside enforcement coming into our, our private streets. You know, for example, we have an accident, and we call them, they say, "As long as there's no injuries, we're not showing up on your property, your private streets." So there's, there's our number one challenge. If we had law enforcement that could step in here, it would be a no-brainer. Come on in. You know, let's, let's set up on the corner here. So I don't know what the resolution is. I know that we've talked about subcontracting, like a third-party enforcement, but they're still, from what I understand, they would still be restricted from giving a citation, other than what our regulations are speaking of. So the challenge being is that if we had something happen where, you know, we, we caught someone doing it, absolutely, without a doubt, we could enforce. The challenge is, are you enforcing speed, or are you enforcing somebody running a stop sign, per se? Say if we observe someone running a stop sign, patrol or ourselves, we could send a violation to that individual that says, "You were observed running a stop sign." But the proof isn't always in the pudding, you know? You, then you have a verbal, "I didn't," or "I did," or a confrontation there. So there's challenges, there's tremendous challenges behind enforcement of traffic control. But I agree, we need to become creative and get to a point, because if you, I'm sure we all see Facebook, I see Facebook too, we just can't respond on it. That is the one, the number one complaint within this resort, is that, "I almost got hit by a golf cart." I received an email this morning from a gal that said, "Last night, there was a gentleman driving in his golf cart with his headlights off, coming at 9 o'clock at night, and she almost got hit." And it's just, how do we change that? How do we get past this, these situations that are just carelessness? And that's, that's one of the biggest adjustments we need to make, is that we need to start caring about others within the community and making sure that we're safe. You know, we don't need to go 40 miles an hour down the boulevard. We're not in a tremendous rush. But your, your perception is enforcement. And I don't know the answer to that right this moment, Will, but we need to do something.
Have you talked to your attorneys about getting an off-duty police officer in here, and doing what he can do to help that?
We, we have, and we can. However, they cannot give any citations. So all they can do is be a presence, you know? And regardless of cost, being a cost involved in bringing in an off-duty officer on property, they cannot, they cannot ultimately do anything. They can sit there and be a presence, but ultimately, they can't ticket you for anything that you've done, because we own our streets.
You pay somebody to monitor the trash. You could pay somebody to monitor the speeding and the stop sign running. There's, there's no reason why you can't.
But they can't cite you for it.
You can write a citation that you can enforce yourself. Okay? You, as a board, and as a management, can enforce these if they are cited and told by you that these people did do this.
We will bring this discussion directly to the board and continue that conversation of what they're, what could be done. I don't disagree, I think we would all agree that there's a problem with traffic control within the resort. I know that, you know, Safety Committee has looked in the past, and we, we've continuously had a problem with traffic control within the resort, going back many, many years. So I think that we need to discuss that. We can bring it to the board. I don't know what the, again, don't know what the resolution is. But I think that you have multiple of your board members here listening to you today. We can bring this to a discussion and see what could be done.
Okay, just as a last comment on that, without that enforcement, you're giving free will to anybody that wants to, to run any stop sign on this place, and speed as much as they want to. So that's, that's what's happened, and that's what can happen. In regard to the cell tower, I did call them the other day and made them aware that their sign itself was worn and tattered, the fence was down, and the pines, the leaves up there were gone. They said they would have somebody out here. I did call them three years ago, and they did come out within a week and fix that. So...
Thank you for that update, Will. Appreciate that.
Couple of things. Terry Baitel, Lot 953. Mike, if you look into it, because I came from a gated community where we also owned all the infrastructure, and ran into the same situation with police protection. If you check with the town, because we all play, we all pay taxes to the community of surprise here, you can ask for, if you invite them in, the police will come in here. You have to invite them in. And everybody knows, I mean, you see a police officer sitting at a stop sign, you're gonna stop for that stop sign. Now granted, like you say, he can't write a ticket, but he can be the person that actually sees the situation and refers that to the board. So you could actually enforce these laws if you have a police officer in the area. Like I said, it might be off-duty, or we used to get, like I said, roving patrol, it was one hour a week, but we had somebody come in. Just because, like I said, we, we have no police protection in here, we are paying for it. So if you talk to the chief, you could say, "Listen, can I at least get an hour a week for a police officer to rove in here, or sit at a stop sign, or sit somewhere?" Because everybody knows, you see a cop, you're gonna stop. And I mean, you're just gonna do it. That's just, I mean, that's just me. You know, they're a presence of force, and you know, we honor the police department, and if you see a cop, you're gonna, you know, pay attention, and you do the right thing. Something else I wanted to ask you about is the budget pertaining to the chuck wagon. I see a lot of variances in there, in the negative, and the last operating, oh, the operating budget, they were showing a budget, the actual of $1,838, and a budget of $5,000 for a negative of $3,224. Where are we with this chuck wagon and getting a lease to start allegedly connect, collecting money or making money, as the board came to us years ago and said, "That is a place where we need to make money"? I had a board member come right in my face and say, "That's a profit center where we can make money. We can make $50,000, $60,000 a year." Where are we at that point, since he's been here since August?
Okay, so we are currently coming up on the end of his trial contract, and we are in negotiations to, for a five-year contract. It's in the negotiation stages with him and right, right. And the attorneys are involved, looking at the contracts and stuff.
So do you know when this is gonna be finalized? Because at this point, is he paying any monthly rent or electric?
Yes, he pays monthly rent for the rent of our, of the restaurant, and he also pays us a monthly stipend for his catering service. It's, he's been paying that since, for this trial period.
Since August.
It's been minimal, but he has been paying. That will change when we get a five-year contract involved. It will go up. But again, we're in the negotiation stages with that, and we're hoping to have that done within the next few weeks.
Okay, so in other words, by the end of May, he will have a legitimate in-writing contract with us?
We're hoping so. That's, that's our goal.
Okay, so, so at this point, everything that's come into the chuck wagon, or out of the chuck wagon, basically has been on the owners, except for a, a small stipend you're talking about?
No, he, he's been paying every month.
Okay, but is it a...
Sure.
What is the, people are asking, what is this minimum?
Can I address that?
Sure.
Since I'm the quote-unquote budget person. I'm Becca Paulson, the treasurer, for those that don't know, on the board. The $60,000 budget has nothing to do with Chef Peter. That was the budget that was established when we still had the Bistro Brothers here. The budget.
Bison Brothers.
Because it's done way in advance. Then they left. Well, the budget's the budget. It's still there.
Okay.
Chef Peter is paying what we negotiated for his temp-
So what, so what our budget here reflects is incorrect? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. That is correct. It reflected the established budget for the year and it was not changed. At that point, we still had the Bistro Brothers here.
So what is, is it common knowledge? Is it open to us? Is what he's actually paying per month now?
What you see in the, in the revenue line item is what he's paying.
So he's paying $1,800 a month?
That was what was negotiated when he came on board for this temporary period.
Okay, will anything be retroactive once he signs his new contract?
The $60,000 has nothing to do with Chef Peter.
I understand that. So will anything, in other words, the $1,800 a month probably sort of covers the electric. So will anything be retroactive?
No.
So in other words, that has been on us?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Um, I, I think the chuck wagon is an integral part of our Happy Trails with the history going on. And for years, and this goes back years, you know, it has been, well, if we want to call it a profit center, but I'm more concerned about Happy Trails amount, anybody in there that can make a profit and do what they do to serve Happy Trails. So, uh, whether, whether we make a profit and make it a profit center or we make it a center that the families of Happy Trails can go and enjoy, have a reasonably priced meal, and, uh, that's one of the reasons for being in Happy Trails. So I think there needs to be a lot of discussion, you know, if we're going to try to use this thing as a profit center, because I just don't see that happening.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, with that being said, we'll call the town meeting to an end. Thank you all. All of you that are traveling, please be safe and we will see you all next season. Thank you.